Good evening. I want to be good. Hi, everybody. Welcome to the Byram Hills Board of Education meeting for May 8, 2018. Please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is absolutely wonderful to see such a packed board meeting room tonight. We are thrilled. We are joined tonight by some of our senior students and their very proud families, I'm sure, and their wonderful educators. And this particular meeting is an annual highlight for us around this table here because in a little while, we're going to get to talk to some amazing students that have had an incredible three-year journey in the area of science research. So we look forward to speaking to all of you in just a moment. And another highlight of our board meeting tonight is going to be budget hearing five. Maybe not as exciting as science research, but budget hearing five is a mandated budget presentation that we are going to give to the public. The last time the public will have an opportunity to talk about our budget. Can't make any changes aboard, has already approved that budget. And the reason why that's important is because these budgets are what support those wonderful programs like we're going to hear about in just a few moments. So, but first, just a couple of--
And we won't make you stay for the budget presentation.
We'll do that first. Nope, but it can make you stay. Okay, just first for the record, we are a little bit short around the board meeting table. Ira Shulman, Mike Sanders, and Laura Stangle cannot be here tonight. But opening the meeting at 7:05, we went right into executive session and we discussed item 3.1, which was a contract matter, nonrepresented; 3.2, contract matter, BHTA; item 3.3, contract matter, CSEA, we're going to talk about after our public meeting. We'll go back into exec then; 3.4, district matter residency; and 3.5, board of education matters succession planning; 3.6, board of education matter self-evaluation. At this time, is there anybody in the public that wants to make any comments to us of any matters that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion tonight to approve our agenda? And a second?
A second.
All in favor? And can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda for personnel, special services, and business? And-- Second? Yep, all in favor. Okay, now, we use consent agenda here to approve some just usual business items, but and board reads whatever is on the consent agenda in advance, and the public has the opportunity to see that as well. It's always on our website. But it just makes our means a little bit more streamlined to be able to vote a bunch of just basic business things all at once. But every once in a while, we want to pull out a couple of those things that we just approved, and tonight is two of those items that we want to pull out. One is we wanted to acknowledge the Armonk United Soccer Club that made a donation to our district, $25,000, and the board just accepted that. And that is in addition to a donation that they made back in September for $200,000. And that money is going to be put toward HCC and Wampus for athletic fields improvement. So just wanted to say thank you to Armonk United Soccer Club and everybody that contributed to that. It's incredible and so greatly appreciated and will be definitely used. So thank you.
Some parents are quietly clapping, but they would love to see us all.
And our superintendent Jen Lamia is going to call out another wonderful thing that we just did on our consent agenda.
Yes, so on our personnel agenda tonight, we hired a new guidance counselor for the high school for the ninth grade transition. So you probably all remember when you were making that transition from eighth grade to ninth grade in the high school seemed like such a big scary place. Now you run the high school, so it's a little bit different. But, you know, we've put into place over the years a really good transition program to help students from eighth grade to ninth grade start to make choices and start to balance the rigor with the level of expectations and stress that are facing high school students. So I am very proud that we have Kira Hunt, who's in the back of the room, and she will be-- coming to us from a local district and also having intern experience prior to that in two other local districts. What I loved about our conversation was Kira and I were talking about putting together, what is the toolkit for the freshmen? And, you know, you'll be freshmen again before you know it. What is that toolkit that's going to help you to get through those years with all of the challenges you face and all of the goals and aspirations that you have? And we talked about, you know, helping kids reflect a little bit. I remember years ago, a superintendent talking to me about the value of reflection. And at the time, I think I had a two-year-old, a three-year-old, I was finishing a master's program, I was starting as an administrator. I had no idea what she was talking about. I was just like, I had no idea. But it's a definite part of all of our lives now in this world, and Kira was talking about preparing those ninth graders with a toolkit. What's working for you right now and what are some things that are in your control and out of your control, and how can you help to make a change for yourself? Because ultimately, it's about your life and your world and the people you have in it. So I look forward to the work you're going to be doing with our freshmen. Welcome. And as you can see, we have amazing students, and--
I see that.
This is the pulse of the high school, so--
Thank you.
Welcome, Kira. Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to our special report number one, which is our recognition of the 2017-2018 Dr. Pevka Authentic Science Research seniors and Regeneron Science Talent Search top scholars. I'm going to turn it over to Jen Lamia.
Okay, so I've been working in Byram Hills since I was 21 years old, so I actually saw the first three students emerge from the science research program. And now, look at what's happened to this room. I appreciate so much the time that has gone into something that you're passionate about, and I hope this is something you take with you on your journey, doing things you like, going out there, taking risks, saying it's okay to not understand this, to take your time, to have patience, to get people to help you. You've all done something rather miraculous. You've worked with a mentor. This isn't just doing school, right? It's a lot different than going and just taking tests and, you know, some of the other things that we know are a part of school and an important part. But you're going out there, you're working with other people, you're taking on challenges, you're expanding your brain, and you're thinking in a way that a lot of other people don't have the opportunity to do. So I'm so happy at Byram Hills that in about 1996 or so, I think that's when we were validated as a science research program, and I think we have shared this research program with over 100 schools. And part of a testament to why this program is working so well is because you're attracting teachers to this program who feel the way you do. I could not have imagined how successful this program could have been this year with Stephanie Greenwald directing this program, with Dr. Matthew assisting with this program, Megan Salamon working in this program. I see Jim Gulick back there, he's been a big part of this program for a number of years. These are people who are doing the same thing you're doing. They're saying, "This is a lot of extra work, but it's work I'm passionate about and I love." We all looked at the pamphlet that Stephanie Greenwald put together for Authentic Science Research, the little roadmap that's going to be given to juniors now that can help them through this process, and it's about making it something that's fun for you. So first of all, I appreciate all of your work. I am just finishing a doctoral program right now, so I'm going to ask you questions about regression analysis and-- How many of you have used SPSS software? Okay, I could have used you at some point. Qualitative studies, anyone? All quantitative? Qualitative, you were in mixed methods.
Yeah.
Good for you. Whose design did you use, I'm strange. I could do this for hours.
She could say.
Oh, what design did I use? Oh. I used R statistical programming, so I looked at spinal muscular atrophy. Actually, I can describe my study. So I looked at spinal muscular atrophy, which is a neurodegenerative disease, and basically I created a timeline of the disease using R to identify basically the symptoms present and when they were present in the disease utilizing insurance records.
And how did you get qualitative data?
So qualitative data was in the insurance records, and we'd access to all the insurance records, which said like the symptoms that you're expressing, when they were expressing the symptoms, where these numbers in the system, so where the patients were, et cetera. So that was a qualitative side.
That's great.
Think about the power of this program, though. So they're doing a lot of the work that you're doing in your dissertation.
Exactly.
I'm thinking back to my senior college thesis, and I did a lot of the same work other than I had to go to the Science Center because the computers in your dorm weren't powerful enough. So it's amazing, you could do this in high school. And a lot of, I think a lot of the country right now is searching for ways to try to figure out from an educational perspective how to change classrooms, because we live in the age of Google, so you can go onto the computer and you can type in a question and you get information. You get lots of information at your fingertips. So no longer is it enough to teach the same way that we all learned, because we didn't have that tool, and we had to learn that information because there was no other way to acquire it. And there's a lot of time and money being spent at a lot of research universities and teachers' colleges trying to figure out these ways. And all they have to do is look at this program, because this program really is the essence of, you know, how to do authentic learning and how to think about, you know, presenting your work and collaboration and all the other skills that you learn in this program. So congratulations to you all.
You could lead anywhere. So I want to thank Stephanie, first of all, for a really great first year as the director. I think we can all give her-- You brought to this program what was not even imaginable to me, and I think it's, the biggest piece is joy. And I think that everybody here is working on something. You love going into science research. You love taking on that part of the challenge in your lives, and that's what it's about, not being arduous work all the time. So congratulations to you. I'm so proud to see so many of you here today and so proud to see you passionate. And I hope in your life, like in my life, you can go and do something that you love. So keep experimenting, even if this wasn't the right thing.
And these are our seniors that are here, and I just have to say, like, I know that this wasn't always easy, right? And it wasn't always fun, but I do hope, like, now that you've gotten to this point where you're just about done, right? We just have this science symposium left, I think. I hope when you get to this point and when you get to college beyond, that you can look back and say, "This was absolutely worth it." Incredible job, everybody. We're so proud. This is really a highlight of our school district, of our high school. You've put us on the map in our country, so congratulations to all of you.
And I can't wait for you to tell us what your science research projects were. It's always where I grab a few new vocabulary words. And don't feel like you, well, I don't know, do they have to say it from memory or can they look at their phones? I mean, some of them are very complex.
They're tuned in an elevator.
They got it.
You've done your elevator pitches? All right, yeah. Okay, we're ready.
So I will read the names. If you come up over here to this side, look at the camera, and they're going to say the title of their science research study. Then come around and we'll shake some hands and line up behind the board where I can take a group picture at the end. Your parents can take pictures as well.
I'll be your receiving line.
Okay, thanks. So we'll start with Alexis Aberman, also a semifinalist.
Congratulations.
All right. Hi, I'm Alexis, and the title of my project is "A Direct Comparison of Infant Comprehension of Unique Versus Generic Versions of Objects."
Rachel Ackerman.
Hi, I'm Rachel, and I study the association among sleep quality, parental bedtime interactions, and protective factors in toddlers living with socioeconomic diversity.
Christina Beres.
Hi, I'm Christina, and the title of my study was "Gene Environment Interactions: Mineral Development Helps schizophrenia: How Astrocytic Dysphymia Mutation Exacerbates Adverse Effects of Cannabis Exposure."
Raimi Berenglau.
I'm Raimi, and I study the healing response of neonatal intercellular disc in terms of the cellular and functional terms of repair.
Alexandra Bracato, also a Regeneron semifinalist.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ally, and I study, well, the title of my study was "Luminating Nonneuromuscular Phenotypes in Spinal Muscular Atrophy Utilizing Electronic Healthcare Insurance Records."
Jackson Diddleswag.
Hi, I'm Jackson, and my title was "How Do Different Demographic Groups Tweet About Politics: The Use of Machine Learning-Generated Word Clusters From Twitter Feeds."
Dana Dunapri.
Hi, I'm Dana, and the title of my study was "Anti-Roe Positive Pregnancies," addressing the question, "Does Mode of Delivery Influence the Cutaneous Manifestations of Neurilitis?"
And we do have a few students at a track meet who are not here, but this is one of them. Let's at least honor him. This is John Duarte. And Brian Glad.
My name's Brian Glad, and the title of my study was "How Does College Football Performance Predict Success in the NFL: The Physical Analysis of Physical Attributes, Game and Season Performance of NCAA Water Receivers."
Take a picture with your mother, come on. Thank you.
Arjun Goyal.
Hi, I'm Arjun, and I explored endocannabinoid system targets in the treatment of neuropathic depressive behavior and acute anxiety.
I'm going to add that Arjun was just awarded this past weekend as second place in a national finalist at the Junior Science University.
Cooper Gray.
Hi, my name is Cooper. And the title of my study was "Investigating the Influence of Feedback on Student Performance and Motivation in a Sixth Grade Robotics Course That Incorporates Digital Game-Based Learning."
Sarah Huang.
Hi, my name's Sarah Huang, and my study was a high-energy gamma ray investigation of the binary black hole system OJ 287 through me large area telescope.
Stella Lee, also a Regeneron semifinalist.
Hi, my name is Stella, and the title of my study was "The Differential Effects of a Snake Neurotoxin Typoxin on the Endocytosis of Vascular Membrane Proteins."
Jeremy Ma, also a Regeneron semifinalist.
My name is Jeremy Ma, and I conducted a study on the neural activity during depth perception using an EEG.
Dylan Mack.
Hi, I'm Dylan, and my project was in developing an airfoil optimization script to maximize power sections for small-scale straightaway vertical axis wind turbines using a cube bleed numerical analysis verification.
Dylan Massoni.
Hi, I'm Dylan, and the title of my study was "The Development of Hypoallergenic Peanut Protein: Characterization of Peanut Protein Cranberry or Blueberry Polyphenol Complexes During Future Dry Dash."
Maxwell Matz.
Hi, everyone, I'm Max. Over the past two years, I've been studying a portable economical method to measure ecological variables of the Hudson River.
Zachary Milowicz.
Hello, I'm Zachary, and the title of my research is "Remind Men of Development and Evaluation of a Novel Mobile App to Increase Motivation for Memory Impaired Individuals."
Lilly Muff.
Hi, I'm Lilly, and the title of my study is "The Susceptibility of Highly Compulsive Dog Breeds to Canine Compulsive Disorder Based on Specific Environmental Factors."
Jonathan White. Who's not present tonight at the track meet. And Joshua Pisick.
I'm Josh Pisick, and the title of my study was "Observing Changes in Albedo Over Curved Slope Lineay Over Time on the Martian Service."
Alexandra Remnitz.
Hi, I'm Alex. The title of my study was "Behavioral Lateralization in Scototaxis Unaltered by Near-Future Ocean Nodification Conditions in Pelvis Celia Latipina or the Sempit Molly."
Kylie Roslin, also a Regeneron semifinalist.
Hi, I'm Kylie, and the title of my study is "Exploring the Role of Herpes simplex Virus One Antibodies in Children of Anti-Umethyl Deasputate Receptor and Cephalitis."
Shreya Solanki.
Hi, my name's Shreya Solanki, and I studied identifying the optimal switching point between sinusoidal and chapsular commutation in three-phase brushless DC motors.
Brett Stafford.
Track me.
You track me, that's right. Lindsay Stee. Amanda Wickler.
Hi, I'm Amanda, and the title of my study was "The Impact of Atrial Septal Deep Eclamations on the Symptoms of Bronchopulmonary Esplasia in Premature Infants 12 Months of Age or Younger: A Meta Analysis."
Sophie Winston.
Hi, my name is Sophie, and my topic was "The Difference in the Preferred Language Use of Taxing Between Middle School Through High School Students as a Function of Age."
Gavin Wolf.
Hi, I'm Devin, and the title of my study was "Keeping the Child in Mind: A Deeper Look at Mother-Infant Relationships Through Analysis of Mentalizing and Mechanizing."
Julia Zabrowski. And Julia Zimmerman.
Hi, I'm Julia, and the title of my study was "Does Our Own Bias Work Against Us: Examining Efficacy Between Genres in a High School Science Research Program."
Big group this year, right? There's a lot of seniors that made it through for three years. Want to see if you guys can maybe squeeze in just a little bit closer? I don't know if you're going to be able to get them all in. You want to go sit back down?
Yeah, we should sit back.
Everyone squeeze in, that would be great. There we go.
You need to know this, budget vote is next week on Tuesday at Crittenton from 6:30 to 9:00. Any of you are 18, you might want to consider just stopping by and showing your ID and voting. You have to be registered if you're 18. Budget support programs exist this month. So if you're brothers and sisters, or if you move back here and your own children, if you want to educate here, probably something. So I hope you consider doing that, okay? We're tremendously proud of you. Graduation. We'll take a five-minute break unless you all want to stay for the budget. I know it's on the bottom of your bag.
My name is Julia Zabrowski, and I conducted research on breast cancer companion consultation and question asking in climatic analysis and multi-level analysis.
Did anybody, or did anybody do my stuff?
It was a great night. Now it's much--
What an impressive group of kids. Unbelievable.
Very impressive. Now it's a much quieter board room.
How did they even choose the finalists? I mean, they're all, they're all finalists in my book. Was this the whole, was this all the seniors should participate in the perfect?
That's all the seniors, yes, except for the ones that were at the track meetings. Couldn't make it, yep. It's a big group, a really big group.
But it's not like, they don't get picked to be here.
No, no, it's every senior. And actually, I mean, the majority of them did come, which was really, really pretty special.
I know. We don't usually have such a group.
It's a real tribute to their instructors also, educators, that they wanted to come. Matt brings us to our special report number two, as promised, budget hearing five. And as I said, budget hearing five is the opportunity for the public to speak on our budget, but not make any changes at this point. This one is mandated by state ed, and so we will present our budget again for the public's edification. And there's nobody in the public for comments unless Susan is making comments. So I will turn it over to Jen, and you know what to do, right? Yes, so tonight, we are going to present an abbreviated slideshow. Of course, the public can go to our website and look at our past board meetings to have a full picture and every slide and handout that we've given to date. But I think for this final budget hearing, we are in budget hearing five, May 8. This is our last budget hearing, as Robin has stated, and on May 15, we have the budget vote at HCC from 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. For 2018-19 proposed budget, we have for the 2018-19 budget, $92,347,680, and that does reflect a 1.94% budget-to-budget increase. I would like to note some highlights. That 1.94% includes some unexpected mandated costs for the district. The teacher's retirement system increased by 13%. We had an increase in social security and health benefits. And that's important, because without those costs, we would have been at more like a 0.94% budget-to-budget increase. So I just want to point out what a lean budget this is and keeping the programs that we saw here tonight. And our tax levy, proposed levy for 1819, is $81,249,900. And our tax levy, proposed levy for 1819 is $81,249,73. That reflects a 3.4% tax levy increase. It's important for the public to know that we could have gone up in that tax levy to 4.6%. So in actuality, we did not bill another $920,000 into that tax levy. And that's once again showing the public that we are trying to have a very fiscally responsible budget to make sure that we are doing what we can to increase and support the programs that we have. But we're very aware of the impact of this budget on taxpayers and are trying to be very cognizant of that. So you will see the estimated tax rates per $1,000 of assessed value in the towns of North Castle, Newcastle, Bedford, and Mount Pleasant. And you will see that we are anticipating a percentage increase in North Castle and Mount Pleasant, 1.67% for North Castle, 1.14% for Mount Pleasant. And we are anticipating decreases in Newcastle and Bedford, 2.59% decrease in Newcastle and Bedford, 2.43% decrease. So on the ballot, this is very important for the future of our school district, athletic field improvement project, which will be listed as proposition number two. What is, if this is approved by the voters, it would allow the district to make improvements to the track and field at the high school. As we stated in earlier meetings, the track and fields at the high school have already lived beyond their expected life. And that has been through very good maintenance on our part. But we are told through testing that as of the 1920 school year, that it is not going to be safe for students to be on that track and turf anymore, necessitating this improvement. Well, how are we going to come up with the funds to do this renovation? The public voted last year on a capital reserve fund and we established that fund, which enables us to set aside monies for large capital improvement projects such as this. We also have to ask the public to spend from that fund. So now we are asking approval to take money out of that capital reserve to work on this project, which will start construction in the summer of 2019. Important to note that this is money that has been put aside for this purpose. And approving proposition one does not mean that you are going to see an increase in your taxes. It means that you're going to allow the district to take money they've put aside and saved for this project and that you allow us to spend those monies. So please trust that these renovations are necessary. Where can I get information about the budget? First of all, we have a lovely budget brochure that is being mailed to your homes now. And this really includes all of the information in a snapshot for you to see how the district is portioning funds and requesting funds for programs, for capital, and other components. Board of Education hearings, as I said, are on BTV. Our district website will include information, our budget brochure, principals' coffees, you can watch any one of those. I gave a presentation at each school. We had a budget information committee meeting here at night. And you can also come by to get information about the budget at the district office and the North Castle library. And just as a reminder, if you need an absentee ballot, we have them on our website. You can download the ballot and mail it to us. Are we still within mailing time?
You can download the application.
I mean, the application and ma, thank you. And mail it to us. And I think you still have a window of time to do that. Or you can actually bring the application even the day before the vote so that-
Exchange it for the ballot.
So that you can exchange it for your ballot. But we really encourage you to vote. And my community will vote on the budget May 15th. We hope to see you there. We've spent a lot of time working on this budget, making sure that we're providing the best education for our children and that we are very aware of the impact on the community, which we hope to keep very strong with the sound educational program here.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, with that, we will officially close budget hearing five and again, the budget vote next week. That brings us to unfinished business and we have two policies for a second read. And I just want to make a note that the policy 7500, which is the naming policy, the policy committee has not met again since our last meeting. So that policy will go back to the policy committee, their meeting again, I think in a few days. So that's why it's not on tonight's agenda. But on tonight's agenda are two policies that we've approved as a first read. There were no changes. So can I have a motion? We'll take these separately, but can I have a motion to approve as a second read, policy 4772, graduation ceremonies? And are we supposed to approve the regulation as well or, wait, okay. We can do that together. 4772R, which is a regulation of graduation ceremonies. Can I have that motion? In a second? Okay. And no changes, right?
Yeah, no changes from this. Again, just a brief summary, this is from the Commissioner's Regulations. That says students who earn the career development credential or the skills credential may walk with their ninth-grade cohort in graduation even if they do not get a diploma, either a regional or local diploma, that they get the credential. They can walk to graduation.
Okay. Fantastic. Any other comments? All in favor? Great. And can I have a motion to approve as a second read, 5152, which is admissions of non-resident students?
Similar.
In a second? Okay. And again, no changes from the last time.
Sure, no changes from the last read. We put this in because of McKinney-Vento legislation, which is removing barriers to homeless students. So this policy was updated for that. And we also clarified students attending the school whose families may move during the senior year. Our practices were the same, we just wanted the language to reflect our practice and be more clear.
Okay, great. Any other comments? All in favor? Fantastic, nice work. Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Policy Committee. And that brings us to our new business. And for this, before we vote on it, Scott, this is the West Pot School Boards Association 2018-2019 Proposed Budget and Board of Directors Nominating Slate and Ballot. Now, I understand a few of us are going to the dinner where it's going to be voted on, but we can still vote tonight as a board and write the ballot, I can sign the ballot and then that can be handed in. I believe that's what we're going to do, depending on how this goes. Scott, would you want to just talk to us about it?
Sure. So the West Pot budget is relatively straightforward and they really projected the budget to be slightly, well, more, the most important thing is membership fees are flat. So there's no increase in membership fees to all the districts that pay in. And as of the moment, all districts that are in the confines of Westchester Department of School Board Association are members of the association. And they've tried to stick with this for a number of years. And I mean, more power to them because I think they're trying to keep the services and the programs the same, but really be respectful of the budgetary issues that districts are having.
It's a great organization.
Yeah. And I think that the benefit of this organization is that it really does reflect, I think, the issues and the things that this region wants to focus on. Because once you get up into the state, there are just lots of divergent interests and need provide a lot of value for board member education, for help along the way in terms of being on top of all the issues and then on being a conduit to make sure that we have communication with our local representatives.
Very good. And as far as the slate of-
And yeah, the slate is, is yeah, a series of, you know, folks, a couple of new members to the board and then to revote on the officers, all of which I would-
None are contested, it's, okay. Fantastic. All right, thank you so much for that. All right, then can I have a motion to approve the WPSBA Proposed Budget and Nominating Committee Slate? In a second? Okay. Any comments on that? All in favor? Great. And I will sign that after the meeting and it will be submitted. Thank you so much. Okay. And that brings us to staff reports.
Staff reports. So I just want to first highlight the science research program that we saw the amazing accomplishments of these kids tonight. And I think especially during a time when we work so hard on these school budgets and we're trying to say, where are we trying to take our children? And I think tonight's the perfect example of us giving kids opportunities. These children had the opportunity to experience, and you saw the diverse titles that they had. You know, everything from Twitter to, you know, genetics and I think just taking either the physical, psychological sciences and even some popular things in our culture right now and starting to look at them is pretty amazing. So I just want to highlight the importance of a budget in doing that. And I know that some of my counterparts who are in schools with increasing enrollment are talking about the joys of increased enrollment because it means that they can have programs outside of regular classes. And I'm just proud to say that we can have programs outside of your traditional classroom settings here, even with our declining enrollment. We still want to keep that for children. So that was really important to me. And then I have a couple of things I'd like to report about. So much has happened for our students. We had 12 student athletes recently who committed to playing their sport in college. And we talk about the scholar athlete at Byram Hills. Nothing could be more true. I just want to point out Antonio Aversa is going to be playing football at Fairleigh-Dickinson University. J.J. Bencone is going to be playing football at Dennison University. Who thought we'd be sending so many football players to universities to play, right? Daniel Disano is going to Union College to play baseball. Christopher Draper was signed at Bates College for swimming. Tristan Gibson at New Jersey Institute of Technology for fencing. Brian Glatt at MIT for swimming. Mallory Lipstein at Duke University for cheerleading. Luke Simon at Fordham University for football. Skylar Sinan at Ithaca College, we all know for basketball. Read his name in the paper so many times. Ryan Steeg for Oneonta for baseball. Matthew Turk, Dickinson College for track and field. And Nick Weitzman at Union College for tennis. That is a, I don't know that we've ever had that many students signed up to play college sports under signing, so.
Yeah, that's amazing because when we had, there was a PTA program that was done about athletics. Was it, I guess, last week?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Great.
Yeah. And they were just going through some of the statistics on playing for college. And it's, depending on the sport, between, you know, 2% and 4%. So of high school athletes that then go on to play in college, Division, you know, 1, 2, or 3. So that's quite impressive.
And they have to have hit a certain level to get there, so.
No doubt. It's a high bar.
And great universities on that list also.
And I have to say, it's nice that our district is recognizing them because as, you know, you were saying, they're not all Division 1, they're Division 3. And so it's not a traditional authentic signing, but it's a symbolic signing. And it was, it was special. It was done so tastefully, the boosters, I believe was integral in putting that together. It was classy. It was livestreamed. It was really a wonderful event. Nice, nice job.
And Dr. Colten Ecker and I also had the absolute joy today of attending the Innovation Fair at Crittenden. Our eighth-grade students, as part of their capstone project, were working on, they had a choice to either present something for a gallery walk, to present a TED Talk, or to do small group presentations. We attended today, I happened to attend one I was, I really loved, Sarah Karoff, Alana Foreman, and Natasha Horowitz, who developed the plan for an app called ConnectMD. And it's really for somebody who has already received a diagnosis and it helps them to manage their medications and look at side effects. And I just thought it was fantastic. And afterward, they asked if they could come and present it to the board.
Do they really?
Yes. Yes. We are going to try to put them on the docket for June. And they were just really passionate about it. But, you know, different things like raising kids right. I loved, one of the gallery walks that I went to was something about sharing chores and that sometimes in a family, a child will say, well, why do I have to do that? Because I did it the last time. And there was this family app that you could put together to sort of like share the responsibilities in your family. And they called it being a family community, which was really nice. And then there was another app where you could find people to play things with you at the middle school level. So I feel like playing checkers or I feel like going outside and throwing a frisbee and people can look at these iPads. The girls were saying they should have iPads outside and you can go check, oh, I'd like to play frisbee. And you could click on that and then meet a friend outside to play. So really just innovative ideas. And, you know, Dawn Sellness really did a lot with the students at the middle school and getting that capstone project together. Kim Lapel's support for that.
I can remind the board too, this is year three of our three-year rollout of the new technology curriculum at the Metta School. So it started with year one being the robotics and coding. And in year two, we brought in more electronics and an engineering design process and project on a smaller scale. And this is year three where we wanted all of their skills and technology to come together as well as creating a service project and you have to design for it. So it's bringing together a lot of different aspects of our work. So it was our first year doing it. I think we have a lot to reflect on, but it was really exciting to see the kids present. And students from the other grades came to visit and got to see all the presentations as well.
And even rate them, which is great.
Rate them, so they were evaluating the presentations. It was pretty high stakes. It was incredible ordering. They did it over two days.
And it wasn't a volunteer, it wasn't like a club. This was part of their class.
Every eighth grade, every eighth grade student's technology curriculum. It's pretty, it was a large project to take on in this first year, but very exciting.
It was really exciting. So I will look for a time for those-
The other exciting thing about it was we have interns from the high school, the seniors on internship. There's some at the high school and they love being part of this. They were really helping the kids manage, you know, the projects as well as getting involved with them. And it was really great to see that as well. Pretty much.
I love to see the innovation that you all are doing with our school district. It's so timely and just keeping us moving forward and fast but thoughtfully. It's incredible.
And then I have one final note. This is really exciting for me. On May 18th, even though I'm not going to be able to go and see it, the third and fourth graders will be seeing an assembly called Addy and Uno. And this is, was conceived and produced by a former Wampus and Byram Hills graduate, Bonnie Gleicher. She was a student of mine. When she was a kid, she played Wendy and Peter Pan as a third grader at Wampus. She was Dorothy in The Wizard of Oz as a fourth grader. So, you know, she's just always been a part of the theater here and then as an adult. And she's bringing this to us. And basically, it is about Uno, a child with autism who faces challenges competing in his school's math competition. And he has friends with other varying disabilities or physical impairments who rally in support of him. So it's really a great message that we want to bring to our kids. And it's so nice that a Byram Hills alumni is coming back to the school to give to this community. We really appreciate that. And I'm sure the kids will appreciate this show.
That's great. Thank you.
And that is all I have.
It's a play, Jen?
Yeah. It's with puppets.
Oh.
Yeah.
Sounds amazing. And back to our Deputy Superintendent.
Sure, I have two things to present. So first, I want to update you on the test refusals from the math tests. I gave you a report after the ELA testing a few weeks ago and then the math test took place last week. So we did see an improvement in, a reduction in the number of families refusing the test for their students. A little bit higher refusal rate in math and in ELA, but still cut down quite a bit. So at Wampus, overall, we had 6.1% refusing the tests in mathematics and 15.7% in middle school. So you can see those numbers there and there. So it is still a big reduction from the previous year. This column is the change from last year to this year.
Really small numbers in sixth grade, seventh grade.
Yeah, small numbers there this year, which is nice. And then still this large number here in eighth grade, but a big difference from the year before. So we did not meet the 95% participation rate in the math tests in either Wampus or Crittenden, which will have some implications as I talked about last week. I am attending a two-day training session from State Ed on ESSA, on the Every Student Succeeds Act. So I will be learning more details about it. And I believe the Commissioner will be there on one of the days. So I'm hoping to get a few minutes with her alone and I will try. But we will be trained on the process and what this means and how it's calculated. So I will learn the details of it. And I'm hoping to have a little FaceTime if I can force my way in to talk about a few things with the Commissioner. Probably too soon to know what the numbers look like statewide. Yeah, I don't know if they'll reveal that. I think it's too soon and they probably, they keep that pretty close until, they probably will come out eventually. But they will. Come out eventually, yeah. So I'll keep you posted. And then I want to update you for a moment on work from the district data team, which is also a board goal, which is on the search for a data dashboard and what that means. So this was the first year that we had a district-wide data team and it worked really well. It was facilitated by myself and Peggy and Andrew Taylor. And then we involved the members of data teams from each of the buildings. Every building has a data team. So we asked two members of that to be part of the district-wide line. So we have one more meeting at the end of the year as a summary of the work. But this is a way to have all of the buildings looking at data together and in the same way and helping each other. So we thought a dashboard could be helpful for a place to bring all of our data together. So we vetted a bunch of different dashboards and I'm going to just give you a brief overview of our process and where we're headed. So first, the purpose of a dashboard is being able to integrate all of your data systems into one place and then be able to use that data. And it also helps you to provide meaning so you can look at data in different ways and- look at data in different ways, in a simple way, and be able to look across platforms at your data. And then from that, you're able to create action plans. You can monitor progress toward the goals that you've set. That's sort of the big scope of a dashboard. It also lets different users have access to the data that they need to be able to monitor various programs, to monitor achievement in their schools, or whatever it might be. We've evaluated...
Who gets to see the dashboard?
So we would assign that. So we would decide who's going to have access to that. So at the district level, we will have access to that, probably the principals and assistant principals. And then anyone else, we feel their data teams may use it. But we have to be very careful in terms of who has access to what type of data. That's all Steph will consider. So initially, Dr. Taylor reviewed over a dozen products to see which ones seemed to meet our basic needs of what we were looking for. And then we invited seven different vendors in that met with Peggy and I and Andrew and some other people. And they presented for about an hour each, and we looked at each of those. And then from that, we had a couple that we really liked, so we dug a little further with those. Ended up choosing one called Alpine Achievement, which we think is the best one to meet our needs. There were several that were similar. This one seemed to have a really great interface. And I can give you some more information on what I like there. So what we like about this is that it's very visual. It's really easy to use. And we like that the company seemed very flexible in meeting our needs. This is a company that seems to be growing in popularity in this region. I know several other districts who are using Alpine now. And we talked to them as well and looked at how they're using the work so that we have some insight that it will function in the ways that we want it to. So you'll be able to bring in your state data. You can bring in local assessments. And that local data can be things we're using from, say, iXL and our web-based programs. It could also be our report card data, our class grades. It can be attendance data and those types of things. So we can bring in all types of data into this one system.
Would we be owning it?
Yes.
It's not in the house anywhere else?
Nope. We own the data, so we have exclusive rights to it. They only use it to... you know, they only have people look at it when they need to bring the data in, like the state test data. Other than that, we have full access of it. And they... they're just the interface. Really purchasing an interface. But there may be some times that their company will need to access the state data to bring it to our system. But we've been reviewing their privacy requirements.
Because it's cloud-based, probably, right?
Yeah.
So you just have to make sure the privacy agreements are stringent.
Exactly. So that it meets our needs. And they're working in New York, so we know that they're meeting the New York guidelines in that area. They have this analytics system, so you can do different types of analytics. And then you can also create individual student plans. So let me just show you a couple of things what it looks like. This isn't detailed graphs, but you'll get the idea. So for example, you could have data dashboards that are interactive. And so what you could do is any individual user can create their own dashboard. I could put the data up that I want. So if I'm looking at certain data to monitor at district level, I can have my own dashboard. Or Peggy might have her own dashboard to look at the Wampus data. And she will log in with her username, which will create her own dashboard. So she'll have access to the data she wants, which may be different than what I'm using or different than what Coman Hills is using. And so you... these graphs are interactive, so you can choose and select the type of data you want to look at and look at comparison data. And there's a lot of different visual ways to look at it. You can also create what's called a data wall, which is an interactive visualization of data using your students. So this is an example where it reminds me of when I was mathematics chair. I used to literally have a clipboard with student names on it called my watch list that any time I was meeting with teachers and students were coming up that they were concerned about and we were working toward and providing some interventions, I always kept a list. And I always would then meet with next year's teachers, and I would go over that list with them because I never wanted these kids to have to start over with a new teacher. So it was a way to sort of keep track of some data and some notes and the interventions we were using. And that way, when I met with teachers, I could always monitor it. So it was sort of a very crude way for me to create my own data wall, which were my own kids. This way, I could have that data of the kids on a data wall, and it would be in real time. Anytime new data is added to the system, it would go to those students, and I could look at it to sort of monitor students' progress.
So who has access to this data? The chairs or the teachers?
Yeah, it would be any administrator that we wanted. Eventually, we could have teachers having access to their own kids. So we would only provide... we can control access. So if it's a classroom teacher having access to data, we would make sure that that teacher had only their kids and only the data that we wanted them to see. So that's one way to use the data. Another way is it has progress monitoring, and there's interventions that we could be putting in place to monitor student progress. This also allows you to set goals for kids. So I can set a target on a particular intervention system. And as the system imports data from the kid, when they reach that target, it would send me an alert. So that could be a target, whether it's an intervention on a kid who's struggling. It could be reaching a target on a student who, say, is doing advanced work, and I want to know when they hit a particular goal. So there's different ways to set these alert systems. This could be used by assistant principals, for example, to set alerts on attendance, because that attendance data will be part of the system. So right now, all of that is done manually by the assistant principals that have to keep track of attendance. We think we now, in this system, can set up an alert system to monitor that for the assistant principals.
So if you look at the buckets of data that could be in the system, so test scores, grades, disciplinary data?
You can, yep.
And attendance.
And any other type of data systems that we use, say, we use...
Like a lot of qualitative data that we use at the K-5 level.
Yeah.
Anecdotal notes, anything like that.
Notes can be good as a plans. But also other data, like our reading level data that we do can be brought into it. We use this math program called iXL where kids do some web-based work, and that's pulled into it. So you can source any type of assessment data that you're working with.
And is there a screen that you're almost always looking at on a weekly basis or do it? Or is it just more that there's this database, and then you extract what you want?
Yeah, that screen is the dashboard. So the dashboard's like your home screen.
You're always going to have a dashboard.
You log in, and you got your dashboard set up, and you can customize that dashboard. And that's what we really like about it. So I might customize it. So I'm looking at the state test scores across grades three through eight, and looking at regional scores. So I can see that. And I can then click on buttons to compare year to year, or to compare it, you know, against other districts in the state, or other ways I want to look at it. I can disaggregate by gender. I could disaggregate in other ways, students with disabilities. So I can go and look at that data just by clicking buttons. So it gives a more dynamic way. And then I can cross-reference with other data.
So they could essentially put RTP information in there to...
I don't know if we would put IEP data in that. That's in a separate system, which has a different confidentiality rules. But what we do use is something that... we have an RTI system that we've been using that hasn't really been incorporated much. And so we want to get rid of that and bring in that data for progress monitoring into the system. So this may create some efficiencies where we can get rid of a few other systems that we use, but not IEP. We would keep that separate.
But you could look at data.
Yes, for all students.
This should streamline our data practices so that the history of the child goes right through the system instead of each building kind of creating their own data system.
So that's another piece, is longitudinal data that's put in here. So right now, we share our longitudinal data across the buildings. It starts in kindergarten, where we keep the interventions and scores from students' reading levels.
Kindergarten screening.
We keep it in an Excel spreadsheet. And then each year, it gets passed to the next grade. And then it goes from their second grade over to Wampus. Then it goes to Crittenden. And it's all in a spreadsheet. And since it's a spreadsheet, you have to sort of tease some stuff out, and some data gets lost.
At some point, that was high-tech.
Yeah, yeah, it really was.
There's no security on an Excel spreadsheet.
Exactly, yeah. So that's one. So now, we just have the longitudinal data that will always be available.
Right.
That'll follow students.
Does this sound... I mean, obviously, we're in preliminary stages, but does this sound like something that would fall under Andrew Taylor's domain as far as the technical aspect would fall under? You were doing... I mean, who decides who gets to see what and how that's...
Oh, we do.
Okay.
We would monitor that as sort of a, you know, from sort of a policy point of view, like who has access to what data and why. We would make sure we oversee that. Andrew would help in that as well. But in terms of integrating that, Andrew's integral to it because we have to make sure that it speaks to all of our other systems. And we'll have to set that.
And are you going to populate this with the historical data? So if you take 11th graders today, or are you going to start now at year one and then build?
We'll have to look at that, what we can do. I don't know.
It sounds like a lot of work initially, like, right?
Yeah, we do have this...
We have a data system up through about fourth grade right now.
Because the thing that you can start...
You can go over to it?
You can't start putting some historical data in, I believe. Probably state data's pretty easy to put in. And when we sign up for this, they'll have a system to set up our... all the data and get it in there. So I'm sure some we could put in.
Data mining's only as good as the amount of data that's in there. So it probably behooves you to start going forward, but also put in historical data, too, so you can...
So that'll be step one, is the setup of this and making sure it's set up. So it will be a slow rollout. And I'll go over what we plan to use it for next year. We want to start small because it's a new system where you have to start training people how to use it. You have to start thinking about the purpose for using it. You know, data's only... also, it's good as the data, but it's also only as good as how you ask questions about the data and what you're looking at and what you're going to do with it.
I mean, ultimately, something like the new math sequencing. Over, you know, four years from now, you can now... you can look at this data and you can say, okay, what were the performance of those students versus the old student? How did it compare?
And we are looking at an electronic intervention system next year that we're going to pilot. So that could be data that we bring into this. One place we definitely see, you know, at the district level, I can see using it right away. I'll learn the system, and I'll play around with it. And I'll probably have principals look at it, the data team members look at it, just to sort of look at what we can have access to. But then we're thinking we might bring it into our instructional support teams. That's where the elementary buildings meet with their teams to look at students, and they can create these data walls of the kids who are concerned, that come up in the instructional support teams. And then you have all the data housed really simply. So it's a much more efficient way to be able to look at data. And it's really going to be as powerful as the questions we ask about it.
So does it have a query model or an analytics tool built in, or?
It does, yeah. It has some of those built in. So we'll have to dig a little deeper into that. And it might take some time for us to understand all of it, but it's a pretty powerful system.
But you can also make up your own... it has suggestion queries, but you could write your own query.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
It sounds unbelievable.
Yeah, I mean, this could be really powerful as a management tool and as a tool to really be able to get intervention to happen before it would normally happen because it's just impossible to see everything if you don't look at data. I guess the only thing to think about balancing, which is a complicated issue, is like you just don't want a kid going into a new grade to be colored by every single thing that they did in the past. And so it's that balance between arming people with the data, but being careful that, like that, you know, you're not pegging someone because of their past...
Yep.
That's the balance that you want to...
It's conversations we have already.
That's what this district does so well, because the teachers will also give us input as to what data they really find valuable and what other data points that we really don't need to worry about and let us form our own opinions of our students.
Makes sense.
I think you have to have a governance model to determine the security, but also how that data's going to be used.
Right.
Like a first grader that, you know, hits issues by the time he gets to second grade.
Right.
But it sounds like it's being used more from a bigger picture, to analyze data and do comparisons as opposed to look at data on specific students.
It could be both.
Yeah, however, you can do that.
Right, right.
Sometimes you need to for those outlier, you know, examples.
And that's important when a kid is falling below standard. So you can put some interventions in place, and then you can track that progress.
Yeah. And we really don't have enough progress monitoring.
We don't. And that's something Peggy and I have spent a lot of time talking about, and we plan on looking at starting some things next year. And hopefully, in a couple of years, really get several, several, I'd say, pretty rigorous systems in for progress monitoring in ELA and in mathematics as starting points.
Yeah, that sounds amazing.
So it's a starting point. The state has been talking for many years about dashboards. You remember some of the controversy over the data privacy and everything? So I know you were heavily involved in that. They keep talking. I see dashboards coming up again on some of the state information. I don't know how far this will go or what it will really provide us. I think it's going to be limited. It'll probably be just state testing data. And I'm not sure if we could really use it to bring in other data. I really don't know.
It's such a small piece. I mean, it's a piece, the testing data, but it's not the full picture way to stretch.
Exactly. It's not. And we don't certainly want to just rely on that piece, so.
And if we can manage it here, that's better than sending it out to the state and not knowing where it's going.
Exactly. So if we can manage it, we can make sure...
Do you have to share? Is there any obligation to share the data?
Sharing.
Like to share with the state, or?
No, not any other data that they know. No. So we will start really small because of a lot of the reasons and concerns you mentioned, and because it involves a lot of training with people. But we want to make sure that we use it in ways that are powerful for kids and that help us understand how we can be helping kids at whole levels. So we're excited about it. It's... we like the product a lot, and others who have used it speak highly of it.
Sounds like you did your diligence with the different companies out there. So appreciate that.
But it was good. We had a lot of products that we looked at that showed promise, but we didn't like the... we didn't like the vendors. We didn't think they were responsive. There was one that showed a lot of promise, but they just seemed to never answer questions and never want to... want to help districts. Like, they don't take ideas from us. They have a clear path of what they want to do, and that's it.
You said they're in New York. Do they train?
They do have professional development. Yeah, they offer training.
Is that part of the package?
Yes, it's part of the package.
And how long is this? Do we have a contract with them?
We will sign one, so I wanted to present it for you. We haven't signed yet, but we're looking to... and it's an annual subscription, so it's $20,000 for this system. And that's pretty comprehensive for what it offers.
For licensed, whether it's a licensed space or it's an enterprise?
Yeah, it's an enterprise, an enterprise.
It's for the...
Yes.
If you don't renew, then what... I'm sure, I mean, the data's still ours, but how do we get it back? That's the question for Andrew, I guess.
Well, yeah, and I don't think we ever lose the data. It just integrates it from other sources, you know, like the state data, we always have somewhere.
So it goes away, but we have it in other places because it's all feeding up into... it just... you lose your aggregation.
You lose the aggregation.
You're trying to export it into some sort of...
Got it.
It's on spreadsheets.
Which is what we're doing.
Yeah.
I won't go back to where we started.
In my... there's definitely two that I know. There might be at least three other programs we will be able to get rid of. So we will be able to save money there. So it won't really cost us that much. There's another one we're using now that we... it didn't have a lot of use or impact. It didn't... it was hard to use. So we're going to get rid of that one.
Do we get BOSI's money back from this one, too?
Andrew's trying to get this through BOSI's. That's why we... that's another reason we haven't signed the contract, yeah. Because a lot of New York districts are using it now. So Andrew's very good at doing that and saying...
He's wheeling his...
Yeah. So hopefully, we will be able to license it through, which means we'll get state aid.
Thank you for sharing. Is it a SaaS model? Like, do they do...
A what model?
SaaS. Do they do software as a service? Like, do they... is everybody on the same version of the platform, or are they supporting multiple platforms?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. I'm not sure, but I think so. Because it is cloud-based.
You're getting technical.
Software as a Service.
That's right.
That's great.
Sounds like...
We have someone with expertise in everything. It's awesome.
Thank you for presenting this to us.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for your support.
It's exciting. That's great.
And it was a board goal, so you did really well on this.
Yeah.
Give yourselves hot marks on that.
Yeah, but I appreciated that you didn't rush it. You took time. You looked at it. And it's like the way you do everything.
Yeah.
I try to do it methodically and carefully, look at everything, ask a lot of questions. So it takes a lot of research, but it's worth it. Thank you.
You know, and it's also nice. I mean, Peggy, you look at it with the lens of Wampus as well, Wells District Office. So it's nice to have that perspective on it, too.
Thank you.
All right. No other staff reports, correct? Right? That's it?
That's it.
Okay. And board reports? I don't have a report. Does anybody have any committee reports, board reports?
No.
Okay. Topics?
Just we've been sending out the BLASTs. We've started sending out the BLASTs to the Principal Association for the Budget.
Great.
The PTSA sent...
Yeah, that was nice.
Yeah, it was really good. That's right. And Laura communicated with the PTSA to give them the verbiage, so that was good. Topics for future attendance, request for information? We're hearing none. Communications to the board? I received two wonderful letters from two of our juniors. They were advocacy letters from one of their classes. One was on mental health and the value of more sleep and longer lunch periods. The suggestion may be of even doing it just one day a week. And the other one was on cultural empathy. So they were wonderful. I responded to them. And any other communications?
Did you say about the lunch?
That's a great idea, actually. I made no promises. I promise. Nope. Okay. Any other communications to the board? All right. And we have our Board of Education minutes.